All right, we're calling the Southborough School Committee meeting to order on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024 at 6:33 PM. We have four out of five board members present this evening. And we're going to start off with a retiree recognition. And Dan Morrison is retiring after 28 years with the Southborough School System. So congratulations to Dan. And Greg, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Okay. And I think Principal Hershuck.
Oh, perfect.
Yes.
So Dan, I am going to make you stand.
Uh-oh.
So Dan has been an important part of our South routine since 1997. He has done an outstanding job making sure our facilities are clean, well-maintained, and cared for. And most importantly, he has been, you know, a worker.
Mr. Fixit.
Mr. Fixit was as kind, has made connections with faculty, staff, and students. And we're very grateful for his years of service. And all right, just like take a moment to acknowledge Dan's work here at Trotter, his dedication, professionalism, and, you know, all the contributions he's made. Not only was he a committed member of the custodial maintenance staff, some of the qualities I really appreciate about Dan is important. He knew that having a safe, clean building in an appealing environment meant a lot for students and for teachers. When people want to come into this building and they see how beautiful it was, it really makes, you know, a huge difference. Dan's institutional knowledge and ability to troubleshoot any challenge was really remarkable. He's kind of like the MacGyver of Trotter. And he had this extraordinary knack for solving problems. If you don't know, he has a little catchphrase, "Get her done." Get her done, which became, you know, part of Trotter's culture, brought by staff and students. In fact, there's a mural in the custodial hallway with a toolbox.
The kids made one, yeah.
Yeah, that they made for him, which is really a tribute to his lasting legacy. Beyond his skill set, work ethic, I've also appreciated Dan's ability to contribute to a positive school culture. He was always approachable, supportive, fostering strong relationships with staff and students. Sense of humor, care for others were constant in his interactions, whether tending to a classroom need or assisting with maintenance requests. Dan's work with students, particularly those in our sub-separate programs, was extraordinary. He consistently built those connections with these students, supported their vocational experiences, and made them feel valued, a valued member of our community. Dan's attention to even the smallest details extended to students' needs. His legendary ability to locate lost retainers in the trash is unmatched. With its success rate of about, I'd say, 95%.
Well, that's clear.
Yeah, so he's been a true asset to Trotter and to the broader Southborough community. His shoes will undoubtedly be impossible to fill. And while we'll miss him greatly, we wish him nothing but happiness and fulfillment and his well-deserved retirement. So thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
So on behalf of the district and the school committee, we have a call for our appreciation.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, Dan. And Dan does not realize that part of the retirement paperwork he filled out was actually a substitute application. So they'll be back next month.
Mr. La Boy.
So anyway, congratulations.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
For your years of service.
Leave it to Mr. La Boy.
All right, thanks, Greg. Congratulations to him.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, guys. See you later. I gotta go get to the truck, Roger. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Next is public comment. So if anybody has any public comments, they can raise their hand to come up. All right. New business, principals report.
Great. So I have the pleasure for sharing from my colleagues, the FINN update from Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan would like to thank Rhoda Webb, our district's former director of English learning, English language learning, for covering the FINN school during his medical leave, as well as all the FINN school staff who rallied around Rhoda and ensured the FINN school continued to operate smoothly. FINN School would also like to express special appreciation to the Southborough Fire Department and school nurse Trish Freeman for implementing the invaluable fire safety program for students over the past month. The fire safety initiative is part of the Southborough Fire Department's developing awareness program designed to educate young, naturally curious students about fire-related dangers. By introducing fire safety concepts early, the program helps children recognize potential hazards and understand how fires start. Students learn critical lessons about dangerous situations, such as the risk of playing with matches, candles, and electrical outlets, empowering them to take proactive approaches to fire prevention. During the program, students also acquire essential emergency response skills. They learn how to recognize smoke alarm sounds, understand safe building evacuation procedures, master the stop, drop, and roll technique, and how to contact emergency services, and develop a comprehensive family fire escape plan. A primary objective of the program is to help students reduce panic and fear during emergency situations. This knowledge enables students to feel more confident, prepared to make quick, rational decisions that could potentially stabilize in critical moments. In addition, embracing the district's theme of belonging, the FINN preschool team is excited to host its third annual Celebrations Around the World presentation. This event will take place over two days. That's going to be on December 16th and 17th. The preschool team is seeking parent and family volunteers to share their cultural traditions with students. Volunteers contribute for half day or full day. This year's celebrations will explore diverse holidays and traditions, including Diwali, Lunar New Year, St. Lucia Day, Cinco de Mayo, Kwanzaa, Christmas, Hanukkah, just to name a few. Students will immerse themselves in a rich cultural experience as parents, volunteers arrive in traditional costumes, share music, photos, and personal insights, and how their families celebrate these special holidays. This annual event remains a cherished seasonal highlight for the FINN school, fostering cultural understanding, community connection, and belonging. For Woodward, Woodward, weaving words and connecting cultures with Len Cabral had taken place last week. Woodward welcomed Len, who is an internationally acclaimed storyteller and has been captivating audiences at schools, libraries, museums, and festivals since 1976, drawing from his rich Cape Verdean heritage. His great-grandfather was a whaler, and his grandparents immigrated from West Africa's Cape Verde islands. Len brings African, Cape Verdean, Caribbean, and global folktales to life with vibrant energy. A huge thanks to the SOS parents and families for supporting this wonderful presentation for our students. We are also excited that Mr. Brady Lumer, Woodward parent and STEM outreach lead coordinator for the U.S. Army DevCom Soldier Center, will be visiting second grade students for the first, after the first of the year. This is going to be exciting. Mr. Lumer will be visiting Woodward and leading students in exciting STEM activities. He will teach students about the importance of parachutes during natural disasters. Parachutes are also used to deliver food, medicine, and even vehicles to people in need. Students will take part in STEM activities where they're asked to design and build a parachute they could use safely to deliver supplies. They will follow the engineering design process, first identifying the problem, gathering information, evaluating supplies, materials available, brainstorming solutions, developing a prototype, testing their design, and making improvements for tests. We are excited to have Mr. Lumer back, and we're exploring ways to expand this program for our third grade students and other real-world experiences. Lastly, Mr. Mucci is thrilled to introduce two new members of our team, Mr. Troy Brown and Ms. Anu Van Ashram. Both have joined to support the Castle Classroom and have already made a remarkable impact in short time at Woodward. They have built meaningful connections with students. Mr. Brown, a proud graduate of Southborough School System in Algonquin, shared his enthusiasm by saying, "I'm excited for the opportunity to give back to the community that did so much for me." From Neri, there's lots to celebrate in the arts at Neri. Grade four students started the school year with a bit of a color theory. They created Mo Sali Dantsky-inspired harp paintings filled with colorful concentric circles that tested their basic color theory knowledge, including warm and cool contemplatory colors. They created a mixed-media butterfly in beetle prints with a bit of insect anatomy that showed strong line symmetry. Just before Thanksgiving, fourth grade students created pinch pots inspired by poppy seed pots. As with traditional seed pots, students worked with a limited color palette, which included colors with accent colors. Last week, they kicked off radial symmetry origami art. Students are learning three different origami folds to create their intricate designs. Fifth grade students just completed their 10-week pop art, street art unit in art. They learned about pop art artists Andy Warhol, Romero Brito, and Peter Maxx, as well as four current street muralists. Inspired by these artists' styles, students created self-portraits, landscapes, and their favorite cartoon character. Each lesson began with planning sketches and conferencing with Mrs. Johnson before completing their final work. The results are worth extra time. They're putting in planning and developing their drawing and painting skills. Each student created two to three original finished paintings using two different painting mediums. Fifth grade students currently getting their hands on clay as they move on to making clay critters this week. Many students love the opportunity to spend a bit more time in the art room. Mrs. Johnson also offers Art Studio as an alternative to lunch recess points a week for students in fourth and fifth grade. The art room at Neri, under the instruction of Mrs. Johnson, is thriving and engaging learning space. December 9th to the 15th is Computer Science Education Week, which is an annual event to inspire students K through 12 to learn computer science, advocate for equity and access to technology, and celebrate contributions and successes of people young and old to the field of computer science. In the spirit of celebration and learning, Neri students are participating in the Hour of Code, an event sponsored by code.org. In library media classes, students have a choice of coding activities for every school level with options of accessibility for all learners. This year's theme is "Make the Invisible Visible." Mrs. Matthews curated activities with that global theme and the Neri student population in mind. While Neri students have already been learning block-based coding, this event brings a sense of community and belonging to all students for a week of exciting experiences. And on the Trotter front, I have saved my update from the two overnight field trips that we had in the fall in preparation for, you know, asking for authorization for these trips. So I'm just, I'm happy to give an update on our first field trip, on our sixth grade Nature's Classroom trip. In October, our sixth graders attended Nature's Classroom in Groton. The trip was an overwhelming success. Students participated in a variety of activities, including fort building, campus exploration, fishing, fire-making, arts and crafts. These hands-on experiences provide opportunities for teamwork, creativity, and personal growth in the outdoor setting. It was great. The weather was amazing. Kids were just out in the woods. They could not bring their cellphones. So it was, it reminded me of my own childhood at points, especially with the fire-making. The trip is also a key milestone in the middle school journey, as it allows students to come together with their peers, connect with their teachers, within a unique community-building environment. The weather was perfect. Our students demonstrated care and respect for one another and for our staff. It was truly a wonderful trip, and it really strengthened the bonds of our Trotter community. In addition to that, we also had our eighth grade trip to Washington, DC, which had taken place at the end of October, at the beginning of November. And it was an unforgettable educational experience for students. We were able to meet high expectations with such a significant trip, showing responsibility, respect throughout the trip. The itinerary was really rich, with rich historical and cultural experiences. That included going to Arlington National Cemetery, where students observed the changing of the guard at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, the U.S. Capitol, day and night tours of Iwo Jima, Vietnam War, Korean War, World War II, Martin Luther King, FDR memorials, a trip to the Holocaust Memorial, and also an experience out to Mount Vernon, the historic home of George Washington. Some additional highlights this year is that we actually had a Halloween dance, or a dance that was held on Halloween. We had students, you know, kids, not too many kids dressed up, but it was on the 14th floor of the hotel overlooking the city. It was a great way for students to unwind and connect with one another. And then typically, when we leave Mount Vernon, we were given a box lunch, and one of the tour guides said, "Why don't we do a picnic at the Washington Monument?" So it was like 70 degrees today. We had, you know, a picnic out at the monument, and it was just, you know, kind of sitting back, and kids were being kids. And it was just, it was a perfect, perfect day. The days were long, the miles were extensive, but our students rose to the occasion, demonstrating maturity, enthusiasm throughout the trip. Both students and staff returned with a sense of pride, accomplishment, and a deeper connection to the history and the culture of our Nature's Classroom. The trips were both memorable experiences for our sixth graders and our eighth graders. I commend our students and staff and families for supporting the work.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Not on your specific school, but just, I think, the update about, for FINN, being able to have one of our past team members come back and fill that role while Clayton was dealing with the medical leave. I think that just shows, you know, just how great the school district is that someone in their stage of retirement or in, you know, on leave would want to come back and support and serve in that way. So thank you to Rhoda for doing that. And we all wish that, you know, hope that Clayton is doing well after his time gone away. So I just wanted to say that that's just like an excellent indicator for how we work together as a community.
Sounds like you had successful trips.
They were great.
That's great. And you had awesome weather.
Shorts and t-shirt in DC. It was, never had that before.
Yeah, that was great. Awesome.
You set the bar so high, you can't possibly extend it.
Roger.
Why would you not run this?
The kids were wonderful. They just, they're long days, and they, and they just, they take care of one another. So it was, it was great. It was, it was at the right time of year. The kids were very enthusiastic, and it kind of gave us a bounce in our step when we came back. So it's been impressive, so.
Great. Well, thank you.
Can I just add one general comment? Just, I'm not sure who is happier to see Principal Ryan return. The students are great, the faculty staff. So again, I echo the comments around Rhoda Webb's providing assistance. And it's very comforting knowing that we can have someone with expertise take on that very important role. And then, secondly, I just want to thank Principal Hershuck and the members, the faculty and staff, who organize and run and take a cohort of eighth graders, adolescents to Washington, DC. It is no, it is no small feat. And they do it with a lot of care and thought, and it's always due to them. So thank you.
Great. And with that, if the committee is okay with this, I'd like to move to E so that we can approve the Nature's Classroom and Washington trips for next year while Gary's here, if that's okay?
So I do want to share about Nature's Classroom. So if you look at the letter, we are, I mean, possible, we do need to change the location for next year.
Yeah.
There's a bubble class coming up from Neri. I believe it's about 150 students. The Groton location, although wonderful, cannot accommodate 150 students in one, in an overnight, altogether in an overnight trip. So they have multiple satellite locations. So they do have a location out in Great Barrington, Mass. So we are, Mr. Kittleson is going on Friday to view the, you know, the grounds and the dorms and everything. In talking with the organization, it seems like it could accommodate our needs, but, you know, we want to make sure, we want to see the physical, you know, location first. So the letter is asking for tentative permission with, I'm sorry, with the dates of September 29th and 30th, so the entire sixth grade can go. Or it's just with that large class, it does complicate things, but they can potentially take this on. So we're hoping, hopefully get confirmation by Friday that the dorms, the location, the site will be, will meet our needs, and we'll be able to finalize that for the fall. And if we were not able to finalize that, we have to, we might have to go back to the drawing board, and we have to do, split kids up, and we might have to do day trips. I'm not sure. It does, it does become complicated with such a large, with a larger class. So.
So would this be a vote contingent on you agreeing to go to this location?
Yeah.
Because if there's a different location, you.
They won't have to, yeah. So, yeah, this is the earliest they could, you know, we've been working with them, you know. Ideally, when we used to go to Stone, and we knew what we had every year, they could only, you know, and we would lock in the same week where we just built, this is like our second year of working with Nature's Classroom, so we don't have a, we're not as solidified. So there is kind of movement in terms of dates. There's, and then now with this bubble, the goal is after this bubble class is to maintain the Groton location and have that be our permanent home for this, for this trip. But we might have to, you know, make a tweak to this. So we will, I'm asking for tentative permission. I just want to share that, and then I'll have more confirmation by Monday or Tuesday next week.
What is the max that that, that the Groton location can take now?
So we had, currently this year, we had about 115 students with about a dozen staff.
Okay.
We probably could have take, they probably could take about 10 more students. So really, the key is privacy between chaperones and staff. And some of these Nature's Classroom, you know, dorms are just antiquated, you know. Slowly but surely, they are, they are, you know, modernizing them. But they are, you know, we need to make sure that those are, that privacy is maintained, you know, that's paramount. So, but so we may have to go back to the drawing board. We might do two-day trips. I'm not, I'm not sure. But this is, from early indications, it seems like they can accommodate our needs, but we want to make sure.
Sure. Okay. I mean, I think we can vote the proposal.
Okay.
As is. I don't think we have to put a contingency on it. And then if you need to go back to the drawing board, we just re-vote it?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, you don't want a tentative vote.
No, we want to vote.
Sure, thank you.
Like, that way you don't come back.
You'd be done with it if you.
Yeah.
That'd be great. So, thank you.
One thing, Chelsea, so I was just checking the holiday calendars.
Yeah.
Of what's happening. Did you do a pre-check? I don't see any conflict.
We did, we did.
But there might be, not be something, might be something I don't know.
We looked, yeah, we did look at, you know, we reviewed the calendar. We didn't see anything either. The only thing we don't have this year is, or in advance, are the wellness days identified right for next year. So that would be the only, like, but in terms of, like, you know, days of observance, we're not, we're not hitting.
I didn't see any.
Yeah.
Any other questions on either trip? Did you want to speak to Washington?
I would, I would as well.
Oh, go ahead.
Yep. And then the other one, the other trip I would like, seeking approval for, is our Washington, DC trip. We would like to move this back to November. This year, we moved it off November to give us some time away from the election. It's the last couple, for the last, like, 10 years or so, we've moved it closer to Veterans Day, the, you know, the time before Veterans Day, which is really a special time down in DC. One of the added benefits is you, our students do get to meet so many veterans on the trip. They do get to share their stories at the monuments. They, it's, and it's really powerful. So we would like to revisit this trip again for November 5th to the 8th for next year.
Okay. Any questions? So I'll accept a motion to approve the two trips or something else today.
Should we move?
Second, back to Molly.
All in favor?
I'm for it.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
You can go enjoy your evening. That was record time.
Same, Charles.
All right. Next is legislative updates.
So at this time, really, no new updates. I did include the October MASC memo in a packet. That is the latest memo that is available. So no real updates at this point in time.
Update on action plan progress?
Sure. So we continue to focus on the goals outlined in the action plan. Our focus currently is really on launching the Say Something app to fifth grade students. What we didn't realize was that this is actually a new rollout for Sandell Promise, that this is the first year they're providing access to fourth and fifth grade students. So we've been working very closely with them. We've received our training materials and the training video last week. We're going to be working with principals to go over the training video, select the lessons that students participate in. We're going to work with the educators to make sure they're comfortable and have the information about the app. Then we'll communicate to parents what this is about. We're going to hold a virtual evening to answer any questions, and then we'll conduct the lessons with students, and we will be up and running with anonymous reporting tool in fifth grade.
Just a quick question on that. When they're, when the organization is training us, are they also training other districts as well? It's not like a regional.
Yeah, so they have, no, so they're, so they are, they have an activity guide, a lesson plan guide, videos. So it's pretty well organized and constructed. So any district across the United States who's implementing it at the fourth and fifth grade level, we have the same training tools. What's unique to us and the regions, the trainers specific to, to us. So he, he has been our guide through this.
And have you figured out how you're going to do the parent permission on that?
So we did, we did find out some more information. So we do not necessarily need parent permission.
Okay.
We are going to provide and communication out to families and opt out. So if a parent does not want their child, for whatever reason, to participate in this program, then they can opt out.
All right. Anything else on that?
No, I mean, I think the other, other pieces that we're working on, so we have a pretty comprehensive professional development plan. So we're on target in terms of implementing the steps of that plan. We're also collecting discipline data and looking at, as a leadership team, and analyzing it, and seeing what patterns and trends are emerging. So I think in terms of where we're at with implementing the action steps of the action plan, I feel like we've accomplished a lot, and we're on target to meet what we said we would do.
Any questions for the action plan? No. Okay. Snow day communication.
So just a quick update on the December 3rd NSPRO news. I did share communication outlining the process for how a school cancellation is determined. Typically, a school cancellation is as a result of inclement weather. So Keith La Boy, Becky, Stephanie, and I work together. We work with the DPW Department in Southborough to confirm road conditions. We watch the weather. I confer with other superintendents in the geographic area to make a decision. And the decision always centers around student safety. We don't cancel school just for pre-K through eight. We also have pre-K through eight North Road and the region. Oftentimes, some of my decisions center on knowing that we have new drivers driving to school. So any inclement weather, it poses an additional risk. So it's something to consider. We typically will make the call the morning of the delay or cancellation. We try to communicate that before 5:30. And we have many faculty and staff members who travel some distance, one sitting to my right. So we make sure they have the information so they're not traveling before the notice goes to. And then parents can expect the communication via parents, whether email, a text, or a phone call. Just one comment around, if you have it, if it reaches a parent via text, it will not call. So we'll send an email to everyone. It will text. If the parent doesn't respond with a text, it will call. So it does go through a sequence. And then, you know, if it's a cancellation, there's no before-school or after-school or evening activities. If it's a two-hour delay, there's no before-school SEP, and there's no pre-AM preschool. And then if it is an early dismissal, again, there are no afternoon activities. And I tend not to call early dismissals. So we try to get it right the first time. So we don't have to dismiss. Dismissal in an inclement weather condition usually can be very chaotic and concerning. So we try to avoid them in all classes. So that is the process. And we try to focus on student safety, and we try to be as accurate as we can with the weather. So that's not, not an easy task.
Nice question.
Go ahead.
For the end of the day, will you provide some leeway, flexibility to the extended day program? So Carrie Packer, she's the director, so that they could send out emails or, you know, there's multiple ways of communication that says, "We understand that school is in session." we understand that school is in session today, but if you could come a little earlier, you know, the roads are getting worse, et cetera. And their staff also needs to be careful. So that is not something you could have decided in AM. But will you continue to kind of allow her and the team with the leeway? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great point. Oftentimes, weather can, you know, turn, you know, after school, and we do operate SEDP until six. So we, we are, you know, Keith Lavoie is in close contact with Carrie Packard and, and we will endeavor to, you know, allow safe choices and to Carrie, take the lead on deciding what, what's safe for the SEDP program in consultation with Keith.
I have two, two questions.
Go ahead.
So, and one is just clarification, I'm actually a booker. So you said that you will text, and if you do not get a text response, you will call. Is that the process?
Yeah, so, so it cycles through different means of communication, so I think it's, and parents can set it up. So parents can decide, you know, when to receive a call. But if you, if a parent has email, text, and phone as the way they want to receive the messages, if a parent receives a text, it's not going to call. So it kind of.
If a parent receives a text, then?
It's not respond to, but it gets sent and the send is successful.
You know, you know, yeah, you know it said, yeah, successful send.
Yep.
Second question. I think, I'm going to write on this, so with the, with the two, two towns and the two K through eights, that's always a coordinated closure, right?
Correct.
So you mentioned that you checked with the Southborough DPW, but the Northborough DPW had a problem that was still.
Yeah, we, I mean, the weather can be very different from one end of Northborough to another end of Southborough. But for the most part, the DPWs are very aligned around their recommendations. So it, they've been very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
And there will be no school closings this year due to weather, so.
Great, thank you. Office hours, so we are going, Alan and I are going to do office hours next Monday morning, which is, I think it's, the sixteenth, at nine fifteen at Woodward in their cafeteria. So that was, the public safety building wasn't available, so for anybody in the public. And that should be sent out tomorrow through Parentsware so that people are aware. Any questions on that? So I think after Mondays, in our January meeting, we should talk about what we want to do going forward with office hours, how frequent we want to do them, and if we, if, assuming that we want to continue doing them. So if you can think about that for January meeting, I think that would be helpful, so we can have a discussion on that. MASC mass joint conference update. So Greg Kamali and I attended the conference in November. And so we just wanted to kind of give you a high-level overview of what we took away from the conference. So I don't know who wants to go first.
I'll go first. So I've been pulling together a lot of materials. What I can say about the conference is that it serves as an opportunity to see other school committees from Massachusetts as well as state leadership. And one of the things is that each committee selects a delegate to then vote on or provide modifications to resolutions that we want our, our, our chairperson to then bring to the actual state legislature. So it's kind of like being able to say, look, you have all of these school committees from around the state, and they agree on this resolution being passed. So some of the ones that we went over, and there were, there were varying changes in terms of, someone would propose change to the language, a sentence here or there, but, so it was development of an alternative. Resolution number one was development of an alternative to the MCAS test. The resolution number two was around increasing to compulsory attendance age. So what is the age that a student can be in school until safe storage of firearms? Not that there are going to be firearms in school, but it was saying, recommend that all districts and superintendents and staff create appropriate communication to parents to help them ensure that at, in their homes, they are doing that. And here are some conversations, you can have resolution on bus stop arms surveillance act and the enforcement of those penalties. Resolution on aligning taxing authority with required local contributions, improving the fiscal health of our rural schools, equitable funding for our non-regional school districts with high transportation costs. So we're a regional school district, but there's some other ones that are not. And when you look at the funding that we're getting, making sure there's a balance there. And, you know, yeah, I'll pause there. So those are some of the resolutions, which really tie very much into what it is the conversations we're having at a local level. So it was reassuring to see that this is something that all of the districts either feel strongly for, and so we would propose them to the legislature. So I was your representative there for that, and that went fairly well. The other thing I'll say from the conference was there are a fair number of great speakers. And it's not always meant to be like a showcase of just speakers and you listening, it's meant to be very engaging. I think all three of us attended a speech that Tim Schreiber gave. And he spoke to us a lot about his organization and something that they are promoting around the state and around the country called the dignity index. And so we took away a lot from that conversation, all of us, and are thinking about ways to incorporate that. And just essentially, it's just that ensuring that we are in teaching as well as modeling that every person has inherent value. Yeah, there was a couple of other, another great speaker who I listened to. Her name is Dr. Darnisha Amonte Jackson. And she gave some great information about equity and what it really is and how it impacts our children. Gave some like real actionable insights there. So I would, if anyone is listening or watching, you can find lots of talks or speeches that she's provided on YouTube or on her personal website. And I think one of the things for us, kind of a charge as school committee members, was that I heard over and over is about data. It's our responsibility to make sure that we have data because then we can make decisions based on that. I've been on this board for four years, and on day one, it was, the language I think Greg has always used is we want to be a data-informed district, so make our decisions based on that. And this was echoed throughout the conference. So, you know, they gave us ideas of if you're not, if you don't have a tool in your district, here's what Desi provides. If you don't want to use that one, here are some other examples. And so for me, that's like over the years, I've kind of always pushed or asked, you know, can we have a, some information that says, well, what's the volume and how many of these incidents? Or how many, what's the percentage of, you know, students increases? And we've been doing that, those studies, so I think we're positioned well there. I would just encourage that as, you know, you are no longer new, for example, so now you can call yourself a seasoned. But if you get an opportunity to, to go to the conference, even if it's just a day or two, there's some takeaways. I did not attend until my third year, and I can see how it'd be very motivating and helpful as we learn how to move out of just being community members to being school board members. That was my very long update.
Very good. You got a lot to say.
Yeah.
You've attended a lot of great sessions. Do you want to go?
No, I'll just echo Kamali's remarks that, you know, Dr. Timothy Schreiber keynote was excellent. I think you said it well, Kamali, the premise is everyone deserves dignity. So the other great thing about kind of the dignity index and what was presented is that it doesn't cost anything. So a lot of great resources that will not cost us any funding to kind of move forward in our district. So that was well, well worth the time, a nice index to have in our toolbox. And then I also attended a workshop focused on school committee superintendent relations. So there was a panel of superintendents and school committee chairs, and they spoke about their communication strategies, how they stay connected, what works well for them. So it was a very beneficial session, hearing how other superintendents and school committee chairs collaborate and communicate and work together. So that was very worthwhile. And then lastly, it's always nice to network with other school committee reps, other superintendents, and especially just the members of Northborough, Southborough, the regional school committee members who can attend. It's always nice to learn together, to sit and hear the same keynote and have a conversation and bring it back and having a foundational understanding of some of the work we're doing. So that is always a highlight for me.
Thank you. I agree that Tim Schreiber's keynote was great. I think it was, I'm glad we all got to, to hear it from the Northborough side, too. In addition to that, I went to a session on transportation, which was very interesting, talking about the different types of fuel that's used in buses and kind of where the landscape's going, especially with us going out to Vid. So that was just informative for me, as well as kind of sharing ideas with other school committee members across the state. That's always a great resource to have. And then there's a lot of vendors there as well. And one of the, the ones that was very interested was the food services there. So just getting ideas on, you know, how, how different districts, you know, improve on their food offerings for their school system. So definitely a lot of opportunity, I mean, you could do a totally different track than like Kamali and I, I don't think, did. I don't think at all. So it's just good to have kind of that balance and just meet new people who are, you know, serving their community like you are and kind of figure out other ways to do things, so it was great. And thanks to Cheryl for organizing all the registrations and making sure that we signed up when we needed to. Okay, anyone have any questions on that? Approval of grants donation, so approval of donation to the Southborough Extended Day Program from an anonymous ABV employee in the amount of a hundred dollars.
So just thank, thank the generous, you know, anonymous person who donated that fund. Any amount is helpful, so we're very appreciative.
So I move that we approve the donation to Southborough Extended Day from an anonymous ABV employee in the amount of a hundred dollars. Second. Kamali second, on favor? For, thank you. All business, we're on C now. Area Building Committee update.
Well, I'm going to do just a couple of quick things and then I'll just focus on a couple of subcommittees. Communication Subcommittee meeting every couple of weeks. I think currently we're, we're still collecting questions from the community and trying to make sure we get the answers to these questions published in a way that the community can easily access them if they want, if they want to directly hear the answers. The Sustainability Subcommittee is, we focus a fair amount on seeing if we could maximize some of the credits that are not insignificant at all, that may be available, which would, you know, again, not insignificantly reduce the net cost of HPAC. And we have another meeting coming up right after the first of the year. I think there's also, I think there's also, you see in the, in the, I won't touch on that again, but I think there's also a meeting with MSBA, which does include the entire building committee. But it's, this will sort of turn out over you to.
Yeah, so I think, so right now, we are in the schematic design phase of MSBA's process. So we are working closely with MSBA to get all of the necessary approvals. One key aspect of the work is a design review team, so we have a design review team. It consists of members of the Area Building Committee, educators from all three of our buildings, and school leadership and district leadership. We're working closely with architects to really fine-tune and finalize the design to give to estimators to actually design and cost estimate. I would, I would say that, you know, the, you know, the work moving forward is really centered around communication, making some decisions around sustainability, as you spoke about, Roger. And I think over the next several months, the Area Building Committee and the Communications Subcommittee will be endeavoring to make sure that people have the information they need to make an informed decision. And just a reminder that the dates have been set, so May 10th at nine AM is a special town meeting. And then on May 13th, this would be the ballot question. The May 10th special town meeting will require two-thirds of votes of approval, and the ballot question requires a majority vote. And would encourage community members to visit the website to get more information about the project and the phase that we're in.
I have a question.
Yes.
Roger, do you know if the committee is planning that during the May 10th special, how do I go, special vote?
Special voting.
Yeah. Will they hand out some sort of flyer or reminder, hey, you were here today, please ensure you go to the ballots on the 13th to also vote? Or just, you know, either just if it's via the microphone to say that? Because it would be a little bit tricky if we're in a situation where, you know, the vote on the 10th is different than the vote on the 13th. It would be a bit smoother if the two were the same.
Well, first of all, I think that's a good idea. I mean, that, the, the content of the special town meeting, I don't think has been discussed, but I think it's a good idea. I, I think that when you say tricky, this is one of these things where it has to be, both of them have to be a go.
You're right.
If one of them isn't, it doesn't go.
I also think you have to be careful about. Yep, and you can't like tell someone, like make sure you go, you can say, there.
There will be a.
Well, I don't know that you can say that, but I'm just saying like, I think they need to be careful about that. The other thing to keep in mind is that it's not just a ballot vote for this question, it's actually a, our local election. So it'll be part of that entire ballot. So assuming that most people will have some interest in voting in an election, it's not, it's not going to be entirely separate, like it's going to be part of it. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
No, it is, it just, I think, provide. Um, it just, I think, provide.
One of the items on the ballot.
Yeah, it's one of them.
Yeah.
And so we can, yeah.
But I think as part of the presentation, it should be said that there's two parts to this without saying like, please come.
And then the last update is that the uh Neri Building Committee will be having um a joint meeting with the SLAT Board Advisory um on Tuesday, December seventeenth next week at seven o'clock to present an overview of the project to the SLAT Board and answer any questions the SLAT Board may have.
Kathy wanted us to make sure it's at seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
So we did post for that as a hybrid meeting so that um any school committee member can join. Um, and I think it'll be helpful if we can get that same information at the same time. Obviously Roger will be there for Neri Building, but I wanted to be covered if we had one. Anything else on Neri? All right, Superintendent Report to the Committee, enrollments.
Sure, so in your packet is the enrollment report as of November fifteenth. Um, as part of the budget process, we are looking at projections for FY twenty six and making sure that we have all the number of sections for each grade, and also that were within class size policy. We're also looking at uh class sizes where it's very tight, um, to make sure that we're actually taking that into consideration when we're thinking about the number of sections. Um, so at this point in time, the um November enrollment report was, there was no change from the October report. So um it's one of those rare months where we didn't welcome or exit students and then be happy to answer any questions.
So I think in the last meeting, we talked about potentially engaging with R L S.
Yes.
Again?
And I have not, I will, um, I have not reached out to them.
Okay. But in how long does it usually take for them to do?
She's pretty quick.
Okay.
So I'll um reach out this week or next week.
I just want to make sure like that we have updated data before we really are ramping up probably like January, February.
Makes sense. So also in your packet is the financial reports, so I will turn it over to Becky.
So I will actually be combining the monthly general fund report and the line item transfer since they go hand in hand. Um, the report that's in your packet is, does represent the first five months of fiscal year twenty twenty five. It's for the time period ending November thirtieth. Um, as you can see, our balance is at a one point one three percent, um, or there is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars remaining on the bottom line. Um, I will point out to the committee that last year, um, as of November thirtieth, we had two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty, or one point two six percent. So we're actually in line with where we were at this point last year. Um, on that report, there are three new function codes that are showing as over expended. Um, the first is substitute, it's long term, and this was because of um an extended leave um that was unanticipated. As most of them are, um, a stat- teacher and staff professional development, we did have incur some additional um costs um in that line item, and also psychological services on special education, and that was for a student evaluation that was required. Um, Greg and I and um Caroline in my office do meet weekly to review the budget. We're monitoring this budget very closely, um, but I would request at this time that the South Borough um School Committee vote to approve the budget until, rather than monthly general fund report, until audited and also those three line items that are showing as over expended.
What was that last piece of your sentence that are showing as?
Over expended.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the.
Yes.
Overages. Um, so I thought we only had to do it if it was three thousand dollars over. Is this, is this in addition to line items that we've gone more than three thousand?
We actually did check and it is for all over expenditures.
It's all?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Did you go over by five dollars on anything?
I, I think I, I was just preparing the regions and I'm over by seven on one, so.
So it's, so where does it say that?
I checked with, um, I actually had um lunch with, um, can I think of her name from M A S C? She's very active.
Marini.
No, um, it's, it's a, she does the training for M A S C.
Okay.
I'm drawing a blank on her name right now.
Yeah.
And I did ask for clarification and she did say it's all lines.
So the nineteen ninety-four decision doesn't come into play here?
She said she recommends it just because it covers us, you know.
Okay. All right. Tracy Novak.
That's me.
Okay, yeah, I know, to me. Got it. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Go.
That we accept the FY twenty-five monthly general fund report dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, um, and the, uh, yeah, and the overages as listed, as listed until audited.
Second.
Second.
On favor.
So the next report in your packet is on the district's revolving accounts. Um, for our food services, we did finally um start to see some of the reimbursements from the state, and those reimbursements represent the months of August and September, and those were for those food expenses. Um, that would be covered by um the free meals for all students. Um, our facility account really has remained the same. We really have not seen much of a change. Um, I do anticipate um seeing some funds coming into that account. Um, we have just uh billed out to the region in North Borough for the central office portion. Um, and then we also are anticipating receipts from Esbit Valley Collaborative for the two programs that we house here in the district, one at Trotiere and one at Woodward. Um, I also wanted to point out that for the S E D P, um, again, we continue to work with them to come up with a, a plan for expenditure. Um, they have been purchasing many um items for the, the students to, you know, craft projects and things like that, but looking at maybe long-term um curriculum type items um that may be beneficial to those students. Um, and this applies for both the food services and the S E D P program are only partially encumbered for that reason that we are still um planning for those. In terms of the preschool, we did make an adjustment to our anticipated revenues as well as our encumbrances, and as a result, we are anticipating a fund balance of about seventy-six thousand dollars at the end of the fiscal year. Um, we continue to work with Jennifer Henry and the preschool team very closely on this account, um, and we are looking actually at all of these accounts um to make sure that we are complying with all of the regulations and that things are in good standing.
Anybody have any questions? I do on the preschool. Um, do we still have spots open in the preschool for our tuition paying students?
There are still spots open.
Okay. So, uh, what are we anticipating then for FY twenty-six to make sure that we have all of those filled?
Um, we are still working on our projections for FY twenty-six for the preschool. That's actually, we're talking about that today.
Okay.
So just one comment, one, one um data point that we're seeing is that more, for those tu- tuition spots, more people are qualifying for um a reduced tuition or free tuition. So that's not something that we factored in our projections, sort of going back, working with Jen Henry and really seeing what we projected and what the actables are to use for next year for the FY twenty-six budget.
So we thought some spots were going to be tuition pay and they switched?
Correct, so we, so we projected based on historical data.
Okay.
X number of um tuition free spots for families who we qualified, who are seeing a significant increase from what we projected, so.
Okay. But that doesn't impact the ratios in the classroom? They're totally separate from each other?
Correct, we still have, we still have space um for students who require special education services.
Okay.
And we still have open tuition spaces.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on revolving? Okay, draft capital.
So in your packet is the um FY twenty-six through FY thirty-one uh capital plan that um Capitol Subcommittee and the School Committee has been discussing. I just want to point out one um, one area where we're working on getting updated um cost estimates. Um, so Keith is always working with Brian Fantoni, um, working on an updated price for the roof replacement at Finn and Woodward. Um, so he has um found some success in getting updated numbers. Um, we will be adding the, that data to this document once that is available. Um, that is the only items that we think will be updated um in the next few weeks. Everything else is pretty, pretty consistent from what you um saw at the last meeting.
And probably fair to assume that that's going to, those two items are going to be higher than what we have.
Correct, so we, the numbers will be higher than what is listed. Um, so as soon as we get those numbers, you know, if this capital plan is approved this evening, we'll bring it back and, and have it amended.
Anybody have any questions on this? Roger, I think, are you on the capital? Subcommittee, capital budget subcommittee?
I mean, I attend the meetings.
Okay. Anything you want to ask?
No, I, um, the Neri, well, this is out there though. Um, I think all we've done with Neri, right, is we just build in, we've built in credits to the potential capital expenditures that would have to be made if there was not a new school.
Correct, so, yes, so, so those are included, those are, um, those are redlined, um, and the Neri Building project um cost estimate is now listed in the capital plan. So that is accurate.
One thing I wonder is, as we communicate this and we're looking forward, I don't think we necessarily discussed in capital, um, how should we be communicating this fact that this is money that's not going to have to be spent? Uh, some sort of an offset somehow or other.
Yeah, I think we bring, we should bring that back to the Neri Building Committee.
Yeah.
And talk about, you know, again, this is.
It was important.
The preferred option has been selected and we're moving forward on that, but again, part of the work will be of the Neri Building Committee will, will, um, need to say, okay, what, if there's a no vote, then what's the process moving forward to think about what's needed?
Um, Greg, uh, this might be a takeaway for Keith, but um I don't recall why the um roof replacement for Trotiere is just in, it's not spread across here, it's in just place in FY twenty-six.
So, um, the Tata South Borough was invited into M S B A's accelerated repair program to replace the Trotiere roof, so it was at one point uh divided into multiple years. Um, accelerated, accelerated repair project would need to be completed in one year, so that is the change, and that is why it's in fiscal year twenty-six.
And just kind of, um, so even though the completion is done in one year, the cost can't linger, it's, uh, it, oh, okay.
Yeah, so when, you know, in all likelihood, um, you know, so our, our eligibility phase begins on January second, and then we'll map out a timeline of, okay, what's, what's the funding, what are the timelines? Most likely, the debt service would not, not be felt in FY twenty-six, or maybe even not in FY twenty-six.
Okay. So I'm going to put a little asterisk just in mind, okay, then?
But that would be the same probably for like any of the roofs on here, but they, but it's not up to us on how the bonding schedule works?
I think what we're trying to indicate is the need.
Yeah.
So, you know, having an item listed in the FY twenty-six column means that it's a priority. Um, how it's funded and when it's bonded is just, is going to be some, uh, some changes.
Okay. So can we, so.
To more directly answer your question, it's Alan and I are really the capital, on the capital subcommittee.
Right.
I was trying to get around the question.
Um, can we update, if we're going to approve this tonight, knowing that we have two numbers that need to be updated, can we asterisk those so that, because I just don't want this getting floated out there, a school committee voted, and then we come back in a month or two and we're like, oh, these two numbers are changing and they're significant changes. Um, I just want to be clear that we're blessing this document because this is the information that we, we have, but we know that it's not completely up to date. Is that fair?
Do you want to do it and say less, uh, approve this less, but those particular values?
Well, I still think we need to have those marked in here so that people know that, like, they do, both schools need a roof, but I'd like to put down here or something?
Yeah.
That, or a double asterisk, something that calls attention to it that says, um, these numbers are outdated and need to be.
Okay.
Uh, updated at a higher value or something. Does that make sense?
I would accept that.
Okay. Roger?
It makes sense.
Okay. Greg, you're good with that?
I am.
Okay. So I'm going to move that we accept, or that we vote, um, the FY twenty-six to FY thirty-one capital plan as presented with a uh notation that the Finn roof replacement in FY twenty-eight and the Woodward roof replacement in FY thirty um need to be updated. Second, any discussion?
I just have a question about the boiler replacement in Trotiere.
Yeah.
Which also has an asterisk.
The asterisk is for applying to M S B A.
It's the third asterisk, I'm sorry.
That's um to apply for M S B A for funding, so that's what that one is.
So that's what that.
Yes. So for the roof projects and also for the boiler projects, we would apply to M S B A.
Would that also need to be updated depending on what happens, or?
I mean, it's, it's so far out, yes.
Well, it's, it's FY thirty, right, which is the same as the.
So what we're finding right now with capital projects, a quote that we, that we may perceive six months of.
Yeah.
Is, is no longer valid, and so there's, there's this.
I think the challenge with the roof is that we have a five-point-eight million-dollar roof project for Trotiere, and then we have two, two significantly less ones later. That's kind of why I was concerned about, um, about those two.
All right, I got it.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? On favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, FY twenty-six budget priorities.
So in your packet is the draft of the FY twenty-six budget priorities, so the operational budgets, Subcommittee did meet to continue to discuss the operational budget and also the budget priorities. Um, so we did redline the change, uh, the one change. So we did redline the change, the one change. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that's the special education civilization.
Correct.
Any comments, questions on that?
It's one of the only change. And I think as we're going to see in the, in the budget, that's a special, it's a, not, not an insignificant driver, right?
Yes.
The change, I'm sure.
So it's good we set it up so that we have the option?
No. You know, I'm trying to balance the need for very detailed versus, you know, painting a broad strokes so that you can use the priorities to then, you know, expand programs, hire, et cetera. So I'm just kind of, I think that this meets our needs in terms of budget priorities and any of the nuance under it in terms of the amount of full-time employees and programs. And like, that is going to come as a result of these. So I don't want to get us too confused, going in circles on that.
On the bullet that talks about, it's in the second section, the third bullet, seek to maintain and enhance world language programming in grades kindergarten through grade three to expand the plus. We probably need to update that one. I think we probably need to do at a minimum through fourth. Or to Kamali's point, do we say elementary?
Yeah, or.
Elementary, yeah. Just so that, like, we're not locking ourselves into only to fourth.
That's true.
If, you know, like, if it works, you know, depending on how it works out, like, if we have an option to do more, I, I would, that's what.
I would, I, I would be, I would agree with that update to elementary. I think that that. Where, what I learned over the past couple of years is it's the spirit of the priorities that we're providing direction to the administrative team and the budget Subcommittee. So we don't have something that denotes what I've been mentioning around a measurement tool for ensuring that the training and the, is being absorbed, et cetera. But we've talked about it repeatedly that, yes, we have a mechanism that you're exploring that we're going to utilize. Do you think that, that's captured through one of these bullets? I mean, it could be, you know, so, yeah, I'll leave that as an open question.
So I think you, I don't know if you have any, a response?
Yeah, so I think that, so we do track all of the professional learning experiences educators are engaged in. I think it's more conversations with educators and principals and the district leadership team of, you're really talking about what, how do we assess their knowledge?
Yes, the assessment.
So I think that's something that will need more conversations about, what that would look like, what the research is around its impact, like, does it really improve retention or application or understanding? So there's some work that we would need to do around that.
It reduces risk, right? Like, remember we've talked about that a couple of times? Like, we're never going to be able to prevent every instance of everything, but it, you know, reduces the lack of knowledge or lack of examples that would help someone to not have a blunder, I don't know, for lack of a better word. So that's what, so simply, like, like the first bullet says, implement innovative evidence-based instruction practices. You know, like, do we conclude that sentence that says that, which are supported by assessment tools or evidence-based assessment tools or? Like I said, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole because you've already said that's something that you're working on. And I'm, I want to just make sure that you know that that's something very important to us that we have going forward.
What about in the last section, under recruit, maintain and support high-quality staff? And the second bullet where it says to ensure consistent implementation of teaching and learning? Like, that's related specifically to the staff? So what if we expanded on that one and said, like, to ensure consistent implementation and evaluation of or?
I just want to be cautious because, you know, our educators, educators are professionals.
Yeah, yeah.
So I do not want to get into a situation where they feel like we're assessing them as their students. So I think there is a solution. I, I don't, there's disagreement, like, how do we, you know, how do we provide professional learning? Provide environments where teachers can apply their learning, reflect, get feedback and have that, that learning cycle happen? I don't think it's just take a quiz on what you learned.
Yeah.
Now you know it. Now we're going to move on. I think it's more complicated. I think there's a lot of layers to this. I think we're committed to studying this. I, my, my preference as a superintendent is not to put it in as a budget priority. I think it's important to do. I'm not sure if it rises to the level of this is a priority. It is a priority. Don't get me wrong.
I would say to the rest of the school committee that, I agree with Chelsea, that's a great bullet that can be used to support when, like, this year, next year, you know, in, for the next, the future years, when there are questions as to why or to support something that is proposed, you can come back to this, right? But with, even with the same language that's there, I, I would like you to, to utilize this tool or can you provide this data? Because we would like to ensure that there has been consistent implementation of said teaching and learning. And so if you say, Greg, Stephanie, could you provide me with this information? You say, well, you know, there's a hundred thousand things, other things to do, well, you can come back to this bullet and use it as is to support whatever your request is. I'm trying to think, not just for like the right now, but next year, the year after that.
So I can give you an example of, like, an area we're looking at. So we're, the trainings that as employees we are all required to participate in. We are looking at training modules to, to better train, you know, all employees. Part of the tool that we're looking at does have kind of an assessment component, like checking knowledge component. So that is something that, that's an example of what we're looking at to implement. Again, to, to make sure that teachers, teachers, employees, school building and district leaders are getting the information they need and that there's some accountability for interacting with it and, and having a knowledge of it.
Any other common points or? I don't have any others. Do you have any?
No. Can we agree on the priorities tonight with this amendment to the second bullet, third sub-bullet?
Yes.
And then we can, it's, it's December, yeah, I think that's right in line with where we were hoping to be.
Yeah.
The, where we were saying to change it to just say elementary.
Yeah.
So I have, I have seek to maintain and enhance the elementary world language programming, period?
Period. I think that's fine. Do you want us to vote then? Or do you need us to vote?
I mean, the budget priorities are, I think we have enough information.
Right.
You know, like, if, whether they're voting or not, it's not going to hinder our, our internal process. So you want to vote them in, in January?
I just think that we need to, like, this is it, right? Like, we're not going to change them again, right? I think that's what Kamali said is memorialism.
And hearing about, because there's a lot now listed in these priorities. Like, like you said, they're an umbrella and there's a lot of work that, that, that is priority work that we're going to move forward. That's not necessarily listed, so, but I do think hearing, you know, from the school committee is helpful. I agree, Chelsea. I think at some point you have to kind of put a stand.
This is where we are.
We're voting. It doesn't mean that things can't come up and we can't adjust.
But if anybody were to ask us, like, yep, this is what we have and we've all agreed to it, okay. So I'd move that we accept the FY twenty-six School Committee budget priorities, with the one amendment on world language. Second that? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Budget calendar.
So in your packet is the budget calendar. Again, thanks Cheryl for keeping the running record of budget meetings updated and no shortage of meetings and work during the budget season. And then lastly, it's the FY twenty-six preliminary budget presentation.
Sorry, can I just ask a question on the calendar?
Yeah.
So we're voting on January eighth or February twelfth on the final budget?
Yeah, so January eighth will be the revised preliminary, so that should not say recommended.
Okay. Revised preliminary. And then, do we know when we're, we would present to the town?
We have not received that data yet.
Okay. I, am I remembering last year that it was not a budget Saturday? It was a night meeting?
We weren't ready. I think they did it earlier and we're still
Okay.
working through the budget process.
Okay. Thank you.
Both, sorry Greg.
Sure.
Before you move to the next thing, on the budget priorities, is, so I was looking at something today online and there was a title of, of role, and I was wondering if we have this in our district? An education advocacy and support specialist? And they, I, so kind of for, I, it doesn't have to be for students with IEPs, but I think that is a main area where they, that person steps in. Do we have that role? Is it, is it, it's not, might not be a title, but someone that acts in that capacity? Or is it when you, you're called in, like, that's a consultant that you call in on a case-by-case scenario?
Yes, so we don't necessarily have a position with that title. I think our student support services department supports not just special education families and students, a, a lot of students. Our teaching and learning team is another advocacy where that's a team that if a student might be having academic struggles with mathematics, that, you know, the math coordinator would be called in. Principals, teachers, it's kind of distributed, but I'd be curious to hear more about, to have a conversation with you about that position and how districts have utilized that type of position.
Yeah, that, okay, so I, I will follow up and give you some more detail on what my limited research has taught me. But as I was reading it, I agree with you, everything that it described, I said, oh, we have a team that does that. And, which I am familiar with through all of our NSPAC Subcommittee discussions. So, but you know, there's lots of licensures and, and different degrees that a person of that nature has if it's just one role. But I think we have, like, probably a combined group of people, each of them with one of those subsets. And so I just wanted to know because again, it falls into like prioritize, social, emotional, physical wellbeing of students and staff. So, all right, thanks for hearing me out.
All right, so we are very excited to present to the School Committee the FY twenty-six preliminary budget. Just want to thank the Finance Department and Becky for all the hard work getting to this point in the budget process. It takes them a, a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion with educators, principals, directors, many meetings to present a budget and to think about a budget at this, at this stage. The budget is, is not about money. It's about what we're trying to accomplish with our students. How do we support educators and how do we support families? And we always lean on, lean on our strategic plan, Vision 2026, and think about our, our mission, educate, inspire and challenge, and our vision, which is a portion of the graduate. That through this structure, we really think about what goals we want to accomplish using the budget as a vehicle. So we have five strategic objectives. And every year, we put together a very detailed action plan that identifies the goals and the work that we're moving forward. So one example, Kamali, would be we could add an action to focus on, you know, what you just spoke of about kind of that assessment of professionalism. So I think the key aspect is the budget is centered around strategic plan and goals. And the dollars is a vehicle to try to accomplish those goals. The budget process is a lengthy process, as you all know. It begins in August and leads up to town meeting. So again, part of the early work is really around setting the budget priorities, having conversations with the School Committee, having conversations as a leadership team, taking stock where we are with the strategic plan. And it's a very busy August through November process. And in November, leading up to the, the town meetings, it's a very busy schedule. So where we are this evening in the budget process is we are presenting the preliminary budget, approving the FY twenty-six budget priorities and the capital plan. And other meetings that will take place this month are the ongoing budget review and revisions with the leadership team, Central Office and Principals, and then meeting with the Town's Capital Planning Committee, which actually has already happened. And then in January, February, that's where we'll re, we'll bring a revised preliminary and hopefully land on a recommended budget that the School Committee can support. So I think it's also important to talk about who we are, who are our students, what are the enrollment trends? So this just shows our enrollment from 2020 to 2024. So from 2020 to 2024, we have seen a, an increase in enrollment. We have a two percent increase where the state has seen a, a four percent decline in enrollment. And then when we look at kind of subgroups, so we have students who receive support based on special education. We've seen a 10% increase from 2020 to 2024. And I will note, we are still well below the state average. The state has seen a 6% increase. In terms of our English learners, we've been fairly stable from 2020 to 2024. We've seen a 7% increase where the state has seen a 16% increase. And what we've seen a, a pretty significant increase is the percent of economically disadvantaged. And where we've seen a pretty significant increase is the percent of economically disadvantaged and low income. We've went from 6.1% to 8.9%, where this, that's a 49% increase and the state has seen a 24% increase. Again, it's relatively low in comparison to other communities in the state, but it is, it does represent an increase and it does speak to the fact that we are seeing families who need additional support when we speak about preschool tuition as an example.
Could, could you, I'm sorry, can I, you want to get questions while we go through? Did you say, when you talked about the top category, students with disabilities that were low compared to?
Yes, so the average.
Why do I read, I'm reading those numbers and they're incorrect.
So this is, so what you don't have, Roger, this, the state has seen a 6% increase in students from 2020 to 2024 who, who are identified as, as needing student support because of a disability.
Right.
We've seen a 10% increase. Our 10% increase is based on a much lower percentage of students.
Baseline, okay, I'm, thank you.
So the average, you know, the state average is anywhere between 21, 20 to 21%.
And would it also be fair to say that for the last bucket, there's so much nuance there because it's not just, not indicating that fam, like families that have moved into town, it could be the same family, but due to the economic climate that we're in, right, you're now feeling the impact in a different way that makes you eligible for, okay, so.
It's, it's the rising cost of rent and homeownership, you know, the volatility in the job market. So it's definitely a lot of factors. And then when we look at our enrollment, enrollment trends by race and ethnicity, you know, again, we are very culturally and linguistically diverse. So this is looking at 22 to 24. And you can see that even in a short period of time, that we are becoming much more racially and ethnically diverse, which is exciting. And, you know, we, we are becoming a very culturally, linguistically diverse educational organization. And then lastly, it also shows the, kind of the subgroups, high needs, students with disabilities, low income, and English learners over a three-year period. This is a trend line of projections for enrollment, so in light green is the high schools. So the two areas to focus in are the dark green, K through five. If you look at the dark green, you'll notice that it's pretty stable from 2024 to 2034, 35. We see a slight increase, but quite frankly, it's, it's pretty consistent in terms of enrollment trends. And then as well, when you look at the middle school, the blue line, from 2024 all the way to 2034, 35, it's pretty stable, it doesn't change all that much in that period of time. And that is true from the NESDEC enrollment projections that we have, as well as RLS demographers, the two parallel. You know, I think the public schools of Southborough and Algonquin Regional has a lot to be proud of. There's a lot of successes, academic, fine performing arts athletically. So I think when we look at the metrics and where the district performs to, at the state level, there's a lot to be proud of. And most recently, recently Woodward was ranked one of the best elementary schools in the state, was ranked 10th. And Erie School was ranked 13th, one of the best elementary schools in the state. This is only one data set, it tells only one story, these are external measures. There's also a lot of internal measures that we define success as a community that are important to take into account. The other part of the story is yes, that we have a lot of success, but we have not met the, the goal of success for all. That we are still working on making sure that all students reach the potential in our educational system. So these two tables really speak to kind of our aggregate, MCAS score as an example. And then when we think about our subgroups, how our subgroups are performing compared to the aggregate. So you'll see that there are, you know, opportunity gaps that exist and also acceleration gaps. So students who need more and who, who aren't reaching their potential because they haven't had those opportunities to, to achieve more. So part of our work internally is really not only looking at aggregate data, but disaggregating to really think about how do we meet the needs of all learners? Who, who are the students who are not meeting with success? How do we change and how do we meet their needs? So in terms of budget priorities, so we talked a little bit about the budget priorities for FY twenty-six. Again, these are important priorities to help serve as a guide as we're having conversations around the budget and what we're trying to achieve in terms of outcomes for kids. What type of staffing level are we trying to achieve to think about the programs that we want to ensure that students have access to? So I will not read each of these, we just talked about these a little bit. But again, I just want to emphasize that these are really important priorities that help us as a leadership team internally think about the budgets and the goals. And we'll note that under finance and operations, a significant priority identified was to ensure that students have safe and efficient transportation to and from school. I think many parents can attest to, many families can attest to that that has not been the case for several years in major budget priorities to make some improvements in that area. And then in terms of where we were, so FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, and what we'll present this evening in FY twenty-six. So I'll just speak to that each year we're making incremental improvements to our programming. You know, in FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, we added elementary world language program at Finn and Woodward. So we've made incremental improvements. And in FY twenty-five, the budget increase was a 5.28% increase. And, and just a reminder to the committee, a lot of that increase was focused on meeting the needs of students who specialize programs. So as we present FY twenty-six budget, Becky will talk about what's included in the preliminary budget and what's not. What is not included in what Becky will present in terms of the, the numbers are any new positions. So what is included is that we're making sure that our class sizes are aligned with class size policy, but it does not reflect any new positions. It does reflect adding some incremental improvements in curriculum and instruction. So for example, adding mathematics K through five curriculum resources, some technology upgrades in transportation services, and also supports some of the work that we move forward around investing in curriculum resources in FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five.
So some of the key budget drivers for the FY twenty-six budget start off really with that transportation. As you know, we have gone out to bid, we are anticipating that bids will be, come into us this upcoming Monday. What I've done is put in a preliminary number right now based on surveys of area school districts in terms of what it is that they are paying on a per day basis for bus. So right now I have budgeted in a 33% increase in our transportation line based on those predictions. We're also seeing reductions in many of our federal entitlement grants. Those include the Title I, II, III, and IV grants, as well as our special education IDEA. So we're trying to be cognizant of that, again, as we're putting together numbers in all of those areas. The third driver is our salaries. This next year, FY twenty-six actually marks the last year of our collective bargaining agreement. So we will be going out and negotiating next year. But those salary increases are reflective of the cost of living increases. They're not, this is, as Greg, as I just said, it is a three-year, so that first year was a 2.5% increase. Last year, or this current year that we're in is a 3% and then for FY twenty-six, it is a 3%. Many of our educators are moving steps and lanes based on how many number of years that they've been with the district or other educational opportunities that they're pursuing. Also our instructional resources, so we had created a plan to, for replacement of our technology and our devices that our staff and our students are using, and so this budget does support that plan. As well as the curriculum that we're implementing, and that may be textbooks, it may be instructional materials that students need in the classroom to support that curriculum, as well as software. And we're really seeing a shift from having hard textbooks in hand to having textbooks that have a subscription that we need to then pay for on an annual basis. We are also looking at our school facilities, those are obviously very important to us and so making sure that we are providing the funding for the maintenance of both the buildings as well as the grounds. And then lastly, with student services, we do see an increase in our out-of-district placements. That number can change from year to year based on the needs of our students and what is determined to be the best educational setting by our student support services. Suggestive?
Can you go back to that slide? So, okay, because I asked this question in a subcommittee meeting also. That's the total amount for, that's the total amount of the increase projected for out-of-district placements?
Compared to FY twenty-five.
Including transportation, including just placements, everything about the points, okay.
And I'll state the obvious, this is why the school committee advocated for creating a special education stabilization fund because we do see volatility in, in this line item from year to year. And it significantly impacts from year to year the budget. So the, I think the, the graph that Becky presented last year at town meeting showing a seven-year history of out-of-district tuition costs, we see the peaks and valleys and the goal is to flatten and have predictability. This budget does not, at this time, the preliminary budget does not seek to, to put any funding into the special education stabilization fund.
So just thinking about that, I know we don't have that in that, in there today, but once we start funding it, I think we should think about developing a policy on when we use it. And I, I mean, I think we don't have to wait to fund it to develop a policy, nor does it have to go with like this budget process. But I do think we should add that so that, so that way it's clear on what our intent is and when we tap it and when, what, which years we're going to put funds into it.
It's better to have a policy now.
Yes.
Before you don't have a policy, you have to create, so, 100%.
So if we can kind of, and I don't know what the policy should say, I think Becky, if you can, you know, do some legwork on what other towns do, I think that would be helpful, just so that we can have a recommendation from you on it. Thank you.
So just a point of reference, our fiscal year 2025 budget was $24,258,964. So if we were to see a 1% increase off of that budget, we would be looking at $242,589. So we always try to keep that in the back of our mind when we're looking at either additions or reductions to the budget. So the initial request that came in from our departments and also from the principals for FY twenty-six did represent a 12.68% increase over fiscal year 25. That would be just over a $3 million increase. Those did come to me the end of October and we've been going through it and also making sure that any of the other lines for utilities and those sorts of things are also being adjusted as well. From there, we then apply some preliminary offsets, things that are known that will reduce some of our costs. The first is the circuit breaker, special education reimbursement. That is for any type of services that special education students receive. If they exceed $50,000 in a given year, and I'm using 50,000 as a, just a round number because it is in that ballpark right now for the cutoff, anything above that we can submit for and the state will reimburse us 75% of our expenses. So you can see that we did receive in this year $1.3 million and that would be used towards our tuitions. And then the second line item, which is fairly new, over the past few years, it came from the Student Opportunity Act, and that is for transportation reimbursement, so we did receive an additional $94,553. So in total, we have just under $1.4 million in offsets from circuit breaker that can be applied to our budget for FY twenty-six.
Oh, when you look at a year-to-year percentage variance, you need to take in what happened with the circuit breaker the year before also, right? Or is that, I mean, I know, I know that with the circuit breaker, we kind of try to, you know, we, we kind of try to look ahead.
So I think, yeah, I mean, I think that it can, it can move depending on the fiscal landscape at the state level. So it's something we monitor closely. This is a known number for us, so we know this is a predictable number. This number is also a little bit more than we had anticipated because it does reflect. And we did get some additional money for the 14% increase out of private tuitions. And then we opted to take that in as part of the FY twenty-five.
Yes, and because those, those tuitions increased in, was it FY twenty-four? So this is really kind of the lingering effect of the increase of those tuitions.
And then although we did receive kind of a one-time increase, the 14% tuition still existed. It's not like they, they dropped back then, so.
So from there, we did apply the circuit breaker and you can see we are currently at a 6.93% increase. So the operational budget right now is at $25,941,166. And so this is the preliminary budget from there and we will work on getting a recommended budget to you either in January or February.
And I'll just comment around the preliminary budget includes all of the resources that principals and directors have asked for. So this is what they asked for. It does not include however, positions that were requested. So there were several positions that we're still having conversations around. The first is an English language development educator. We're looking at our numbers very closely to make sure we're meeting the needs of our ELD students. We also are having conversations around the health position. We've talked about the goal of really making sure we have a coherent, consistent health curriculum. So that, that is a position that was requested. We also, was requested for a math specialist, so as we launch a new math program, some additional support in supporting our educators. It was requested to have an additional nurse here at Trotter. And then lastly, the world language position, so implementing the third year of a three-year plan. What, where we are right now in terms of these positions is we're not focusing on the positions, we're focusing on the goals. So for example, in world language, the goal is to bring world language to grade. So, for example, in world language, the goal is to bring world language to grades four and five next year. We're thinking about how do we accomplish that goal? Do we have resources currently that we can achieve that goal, or do we need to add a position? Those are the conversations that are happening around the positions that we have, but they're currently not reflected in a 6.93%. The other conversation that we're having is that as we're proposing a Mary building project, if it does pass, what does next year look like, and what does the next three years look like? In terms of if it does pass, next year, we will remain as three elementary schools, and then in twenty-six to twenty-eight, we'll condense to two. And what does that mean for the resources? So that is also a conversation that we're having internally around making sure that we're taking that information into account as we kind of build our budgets and think about positions.
Yeah, and I'll also say, it does also include known staffing at this time. Educators do have until January fifteenth to let us know if they intend to retire at the end of the year. So at this point in time, this budget is built on what we know as of today in terms of who we will have in the classrooms. So just a reminder about where we are right now with the preliminary budget. So we, we do have a $1.7 million budget increase, or a 6.93% increase for a total number of $25,941,166. And then our next steps are to have ongoing budget review and revisions so that we can be prepared to present to the committee a revised preliminary budget in January. And then in January and February, we will continue that work to get to a recommended budget that the school committee can then approve and vote on. And then we will have our conversations with the town committees, the financial advisory, the select board, and also continue the conversations that we've been having with capital planning. And all of that will culminate in April at the annual town meeting where we will present our budget.
Question. Greg, in the consideration of the roles that, and how to fulfill the objective of the roles without new personnel, what about HR? Did you, is that, because that, for the last two years, has been an area that has been requested expansion?
Yeah, so the, so the two areas, the two departments that really could use some additional support, HR. So that has been an ongoing priority that we've been brought forth, and then finance. So, you know, the amount of procurement and paperwork and the documentation is significant. That falls on Becky, she is the procurement officer. That requires a tremendous amount of paperwork and administrivia. Not that Becky can't handle it, she handles it very well, but it's not the best use of, at these times. So thinking about finding a person to support HR and the finance in those areas. We're actually looking at the budgets in FY twenty-five to see if there is some space to be able to create some relief for Heather and Becky at this time.
So if we could, if there were, um...
And the, that, a position would be a forty, thirty, thirty split. So it's, you know, if it's, you know, a $60,000 position, Southborough's portion of the decision would be $18,000. It's a good balance.
Yeah. So a past financial analyst with Title IX experience and HR training will be on the lookout for...
And that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Any other questions related to the presentation?
So, yeah, I'll open the questions to both you and Roger, because Chelsea and I are on the subcommittee, so if you have any questions about what anything meant, or...
Yeah, I did have a quick question, just out of curiosity. On the metric slide, you had just some data just regarding just like where Algonquin and where our schools are, were relative to other schools in Massachusetts. I was wondering if you, it looks like is the, is the US News rankings where you source this particular data?
Yes.
There are so many lists, I'm just out of pure curiosity, and as parents look for like, how does Southborough compare against other schools, other districts, et cetera? Do you have particular lists that typically can...
Yeah, so I think, you know, one of the MASC workshops was really showing some of the data tools that we have at our fingertips to look at analysis of, in comparisons. So Boston Magazine is one we use, US News and World, and then MCAS, and then we have AP and SAT data. The best tool to look at is there's a radar tool that DESI provides, and I can send that out to, to the committee and the community, where you can select districts, comparable districts in terms of socioeconomics, size, budgets, and actually see where we compare along a variety of metrics and indicators to other districts.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So in terms of next steps and direction that you need from the school committee, do you want to elaborate?
Sure, so, you know, this is a very preliminary, what would be helpful for us internally is to really get some guidance around what the committee is looking for in terms of an increase from the 6.93%, a few, you know, whether it's a few, a few models, you know, a 3.5, a 4.5, a 5.5, so that internally we can start putting that together and having conversations with the leadership team. You know, if we were to add another percent or two percent, what would that look like? If we were to reduce by two percent, what would that look like, and what would the impact be? So that would be really helpful guidance for us internally as we move forward. The next budget meeting for the, for the Southborough School Committee is January eighth, which isn't that far away. So we have a lot of work to do internally to get, to be prepared for the January eighth meeting and provide a revised preliminary.
And you have a question?
Greg.
So regarding, I guess, options. It takes a lot of work to respond to, let's take a look at a 4.5% budget, okay. Let's take a look at a 3.5% budget. So what is a reasonable granularity to have to work with? Okay, as far as options, I'm just curious what you're, if that makes sense, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree.
So, so the way that Becky has organized the budget process internally is we, we ask for some of that information upfront. So, so when principals, for example, or directors create budgets, they start thinking about different variations of that budget. So we have a good baseline to be able to move in either direction. So it's not a huge task. I think what takes a lot of time is having really in-depth, deep conversations around what we're trying to accomplish, and how do we accomplish that? You know, those areas around world language and mathematics specialists and so forth. But I think it's not so long, a long answer to a short question is, we can do it.
We can do it. Get her done.
Without too much... I should let Becky answer the question.
He agrees.
No, she shouldn't. Becky answered better than I can.
So, so, okay, so you, I heard you say you can get her done, but is there a granularity that, I mean...
Like 0.5 or a...
Is it a half a percent, something like that, versus a full percent?
I mean, I think a percentage is probably the, if we did like a three and a half, a four and a half, a five and a half, maybe.
Okay, so, but you're saying, you're saying that the variance, you'd be looking for a, a 1% difference. Do you want to speak to maybe what probably a maximum might be, at least in your view, or anyone? I mean, just as far as the climate this year?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think this year is not the year to be bringing in a higher percentage than what we have had over the last couple of years. Now, I know the last couple of years are a little bit skewed because of, we had offsets from grants, et cetera. But I think, you know, going to town meeting in April with a high operational budget, and then going to town meeting, special town meeting in May with a building, a very large, for a very large sum of money, would not, I just don't think that's being fiscally responsible. So I think, um...
I'm already throwing up.
I hate to like be a, like, I hate to like live by a number, but I think in this case, I would want to go above 5%.
Well, curious what the committee would think, and just to think about this, because this doesn't conform exactly to a 4%, but for a three and a half, a four and a half, and a five.
And what, I would even counter that and just say, show me a four and a half and five and a half. I don't think, um, maybe it's just due to me being involved with the budget subcommittee and still seeing the details. What we can achieve at three and a half is not, it's quite nominal. It's just not moving the needle enough, and, and so that's why I would say, I, I like, I, it's, I know that that is not going to achieve some of the change that we want to have happen. So just show, if it'd be helpful, I think, just give her the time to just park it at a four and a half and a five and a half. That way, Chelsea's suggestion, she really doesn't want to go above five, but we could see what that would look like. And the 4.5, we'll see what it looks like a little bit less. And maybe through discussion, we land somewhere, you know, there's, you know, somewhere in that range that would be a, a good spot. I don't think it's necessary to see any thing above a six. So if, for example, the 5.5 that, proposal that Becky could provide, and we, and it's gonna have a slide that says, this is what we're leaving off. And then we say, oh, man, we really would like to have that incorporated. She's gonna tell us that's gonna bring you to 5.82 or 5.73. And then we say, but it is really important, so we don't even need to see the six. We can actually just adjust that based on the 5.5 proposal. So that's my, I wouldn't be opposed to having the three suggestions you have, but I would also say we could decrease their workload and just say, give me those two.
What were your three suggestions?
Well, I'll respectfully disagree, only because I, I heard the district say they're kind of set up to make these changes. I think that if we only asked for a four and a half and a five and a half, A, already hearing Chelsea's view that anything over five might be problematic in this climate, then it almost seems like we're sort of almost saying, all right, we're just trying to look at a 4.5% budget, because we're not gonna get to five and a half perhaps. I still think that if we don't have a three and a half, and Kamali, I don't know, you may know what I don't know as far as what's in that and what's not in that. I don't know anything about what's in that and what's not in that, and it may very well be true that when we see a three and a half, we're gonna say, oh, you know, there's just not enough there. But, but anyway.
We got to 3.98 or so previous years, but that's when we had all of these grants and funds from the state, et cetera, and federal. And so that, that's where my thinking is, that I knew how hard it was for us to just, to, to achieve that, but it was only compensated based on all the federal and state grants that we had.
So, taking a slightly different view, I think it's...
I'm hurt, you're taking a different view.
So I, having gone through budget on select board more than on school committee, I think that challenge that you run into by picking a low number just to see, that then means, and I don't know what the breaking point is, but it could mean that we're talking about potential staff reduction, which I, as one school committee member, is, am not in favor of looking at. Now, reallocation...
I, I agree with you as far as, I wouldn't be in favor of looking at that either.
So if it's not something that we would be willing to do in terms of, let's say the 3.5 is what would result in staff cuts, if it's not something that the school committee would be willing to do and go to a 3.5 that would result in staff cuts, I don't even think we should put on the table. I'd be more comfortable of saying to Becky, show us the lowest that you can get without doing staff reductions, or through any attrition or what, you know, what have you, that's kind of what I would. And maybe she'll come back and say, okay, then we're at a 3.9, that's, that's the minimum you can get to.
And our, and our approach has been, you know, level services, and we provide a high-level service just in a, in a year, I would make mental growth areas. So that's, that's been our, some of the conversations we were having, which is in alignment to what you're saying, Chelsea. We have not taken out the red pen, and...
Right, but I don't want to, I don't want to, us be viewed as taking out the red pen if we have no intention of doing that, and...
I agree.
I don't think anybody on this committee does have an intention.
I actually think that's a fair way to do it. In other words, I, I thought people were worried about, well, if we look at a three and a half, are we worried that that might be what we end up at? But if it has staff reductions, then I, I would certainly not vote for it. So I think that basically, you came at it a better way than I did, okay? And I think it was, it kind of embraced Kamali's approach as far as being concerned, concerned about that number. So both those ways are kind of better than the way I was thinking, so I, I don't know, I'll give up. But I, I like that the lowest, the lowest one without any staff cuts to at least take a look at, all right, so what does that mean?
And then two above that, and then two different ranges above that.
And, and to be, and I'm, I'm okay with, if it works out, Becky, that it would be the low point and then 4.5 and 5.5, I think that's fine to show that. I just threw five out there as...
So internally?
Yeah, go ahead.
We do this work anyway.
What, what did you say?
So internally, we do this work anyway.
Yeah.
So we try to be responsive to, you know, meetings we have for the school committee that they'll say, well, let's add this, let's see what the impact is, let's reduce this. So we are, we will, we will be prepared for a variety of scenarios. And the key work for us is having all the conversations that we need to have in order to be prepared to provide information to the committee.
Well, they keep being so accommodating, why don't we just say, yes, let's take a look at a five also, right? In other words, if you're saying the lowest would, the lowest would know cuts.
Yeah.
A four and a half, a five, a five and a half, no, yes?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the other challenge in terms of process is that, you know, January eighth is, you know, we come back from December break, and then it's January eighth.
Yeah.
So typically, we would have an operational budget subcommittee to actually run through some of these scenario budgets. So we are, we are, our thinking is that with this information, we can put together some scenarios and potentially have an operational budget subcommittee meeting next week. We'll have to find, see if we can find the time, it's not a great week. So that then, we've had those conversations in operational budget subcommittee, then what we present is reflective of what the ask is of the school committee.
So, and would that also mean that, let's say we're looking at a 5.5, and 5.5A shows adding a math coach. 5.5B... Five point five B shows adding a health teacher, right? So like, at least then we can see how we can plug and play some of those, okay?
The other piece of information is that we're one department of many. So we are a department of the town.
Yeah.
Also, I know the school committee is connected to kind of that, that town bigger picture. So working closely with Mark Purple and his team to make sure that, you know, we're having dialogue and conversation to make sure that, you know, again, we're taking that into consideration.
So there's, there's, the next Brian Valentine meeting isn't until...
Next week.
Next week.
There's no other meetings next week, so I don't know if I'd do something to me, you know, too. But it probably does make sense to do that, I mean, the...
Yeah.
And I guess you'd do the same thing as, as caller for the full, full committee?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I think that makes the most sense. So Laura, feel free to join the Budget Subcommittee. We post for the full committee because it's, it's an important topic and I want to make sure everybody wants to attend.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
All right, nothing on policy, right?
Uh, no updates, no?
Personnel?
So when you're active as the personnel report and there, we're welcoming more people than more people are exiting, so that's a good sign.
Action on minutes, so we have November thirteenth, open minutes, and Operational Budget Subcommittee on November eighteenth. Any changes to those?
All right, so I move that we approve the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four open meeting minutes and the Operational Subcommittee, oh, sorry, Operational Budget Subcommittee Special Open Meeting Minutes of November eighteen, twenty twenty-four. All in favor? Thank you. All right, next month, FY twenty-six recommended budget?
Revised.
Revised preliminary budget? MCAS? Anybody have anything else?
The Building Committee is going to be a standard.
Yeah, we got that. I wrote down policy on special education revolving account. Doesn't mean that we have to do it in January, but I think, I'm just going to write it down so I don't forget. Something else?
So just a future agenda item, I think it would be nice to have the NAREY Building Committee present to the school committee.
Agreed.
A formal presentation of the plans for two reasons. One, just to make sure everyone's up to speed. And then secondly, it's recorded in another vehicle for people to get information.
Where is the, kind of the moving forward calendar on transportation, any transportation contract? Probably, it's, probably too early to have any kind of a, you know, update by next meeting, right? We just...
We should have a budget by then.
So Monday, the, the bids are due, so we're having a bid opening at eleven o'clock, so we will...
So you have a, something on the information about that for the next meeting?
The sixteenth.
Any class?
All right, I move for your turn at eight forty-seven.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.